That'll be go, go.
It just makes me more tired. Yes?
I started the the zoom recording.
Okay.
No, Dan, Andy likes it when I announce.
Okay.
It's just adorable.
So, yeah.
Is that for Himalayan?
Now, it's the Washington Oregon Potato Show.
Interesting.
It is interesting.
Oh, this is.
I don't know if they ate it there.
Spray water.
So they've got like seed companies, they have um like the baby potatoes, like you get a husk.
They've been in.
Um, so they've got those different companies, you got fertilizer, chemical, oil.
Oh, look at this.
Irrigation.
Rock, you're gonna start the meeting, right? Right now. Okay. Okay, I'll call the meeting to order and we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Oh.
Wow, thank you.
Thank you very much.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A motion to approve the agenda of the special board meeting tonight.
I'm moved.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And our sole agenda item is the dinner served to the board by the history students.
And so far, it looks amazing.
Yes, and when they come in, both of them, thank you.
This looks beautiful.
You have motion approved dinner?
Yeah.
Yes.
This looks good.
This is the nicest dinner I'm gonna have in weeks.
I know.
Maybe all year.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you.
We had them washed before they came out, so.
Okay. I washed it.
I'm Riley.
Nice to meet you, Riley.
Nice to meet you.
If you go down.
Oscar, I'm Jason. Nice to meet you. Thank you.
Hi, Oscar. Thank you so much. Riley, nice to meet you, Riley. And my name is Peggy Douglas. Nice to meet you.
My name's Riley.
I like Jason. Nice to meet you. Thank you.
Hi, Riley. My name is.
Hi.
Are you excited about it?
Annalisa, nice to meet you. Thank you for dinner.
Nice.
You're welcome.
Hi, my name is Trent.
I'm trying to.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you, Trent. I'm Jason. Nice to meet you. Thank you.
Have you been up to see your new building yet?
You, my name is Trent.
Oh, it's looking really nice.
I'm Alisa. It's nice to meet you.
Hi, I'm Jamie.
Jamie, I'm Jason. Nice to meet you.
Jamie.
Alisa, nice to meet you, Jamie. Thank you for dinner.
So, what do we start? Those are good.
How are you, Brett? No. I should have skipped lunch today, this.
I know.
But this is very attractive, the way they put it together.
Beautiful.
It's beautiful.
Just have the menu. Meeting. Jaco de.
We're gonna remove it. They're gonna bring in our next question.
Uh-huh. Very well presented.
It's beautiful. And they brought pizza in for the kids, too.
Did they?
Yeah, for Gilman with the stack of boxes from Domino's.
Well, hopefully they'll uh explain the leadership uh program that they're doing and.
I wonder if these are all fifth graders?
That's what Mr. Gilman had said, that they're all fifth graders.
Okay.
This.
Maybe we saw a thousand years. Are you gonna steal that?
Are you gonna pocket that? Take it home?
That was gold. Well, you know, I thought it was gold.
Since I've seen that.
Along, but it's just a gold handle with the silver.
It's very pretty. I was giving, I didn't really think.
I've never seen a, you know, normally they're all one color.
Yeah.
But having transitional.
Very good. Very good.
Well, cheers.
Oh, very good. Cheers.
Pleasure serving of all of you.
Yes.
Skylar and her husband are in Italy for three weeks.
Oh, that's exciting.
Everything is paid for by the company that sponsoring. Um, well, it's through Bruce's work with Melly. He's the um, he's their engineer. Those are the best kinds of trips.
Oh, I know.
Yeah. When we have been to Italy, John's favorite is Pompeii. They went to Pompeii. They had uh, they went to Milan first. And then they had like three days in Milan and before they went on to, I think they're in Florence now.
Fresh rosemary.
But it's awesome things. It was a, a train trip, side trip to um, they go to Pompeii and she said, we're here. So they went to Pompeii, yeah.
Granny's missing out.
Yeah, and Naples.
You always talk about how they don't have cookies anymore.
More impressive than Pompeii, Pompeii. But they loved all the good stuff in the museum.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
The menus. They did a good job on making that.
Really?
You're right about the nicest dinner. Probably have a. In a while.
Until next year?
Yes.
How was your appetizer?
This was really nice. Did you have them?
Very.
Together?
You guys did a very good job.
You did pretty good. Well, it's really nice.
Did you put the menu together?
No.
No?
We barely came all together.
So is this like a class you guys do?
Hmm.
It's like a club.
She's good to do that.
We are a student.
A student council.
No.
And do you guys meet like months a week?
For the student council.
Not really. Usually we just take turns like on some days, on Tuesdays and um, and um, what was it? To their recess. Thursdays, we go and read to.
Well, that's fun. And you're in fifth grade?
And stuff.
Oh, wow.
And we'd all have a list that gets to go first and who gets to go last. I'm actually one of the last ones. And then on Mondays, Fridays, we go out.
Sounds like you're doing a good job at your, as a leadership team.
And help.
Congratulations.
Water and stuff.
So what grade are you in?
That's really nice.
Are you enjoying it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Ooh. Everything kind of mixed up lately because um, they said it was my turn and Jamie's before me, so she's supposed to go with me, but then Chelsea goes with me and I'm confused.
It'll all work out.
Yeah.
So Kevin, um, you, so what, this is part of your, the leadership team at your school, right?
These are the, are the leadership team, like um, Riley was explaining, they go out with the little kids um, and play with them and just provide that mentor time and then they'll also go and read. Um, our, our phones are up and running now, so we can do all calls, so they'll, they'll do morning announcements and they'll just rotate through, so they all have a choice to. Chance to do that, but it's not a, it's not like a formal ASB that you get at the high school.
Yeah.
Um, middle school, uh, get some into, they had to run, they had to present to their class, um, and there was some, some voting, so.
Oh, that's neat.
Well, they've done a really nice job.
So all of your students are on the, the first floor or do you, are you occupying classrooms on the second floor also?
We have uh, the intermediate classrooms are upstairs.
Upstairs.
They'll speak very well.
They do, yeah.
It's intimidating, I think.
As a fifth grader, that's a, I don't know if I could have done the same thing.
They learn. By the time they get into the sixth grade, they won't know how to talk again. The boys.
Yeah.
My second grader, every, since, every day, preschool on, how was, what'd you do at school today? Everything. How was it? Great and awesome. Four-year-old comes home from preschool. Let me show you what I did today. We made a pattern. Bear, duck, bear, duck, bear, duck, and then I did the letter L and llama starts with, I like, it's like a minute by minute play of everything.
Where's she going to preschool?
At Bethel, so Debbie Limpke is her teacher and it's, it's, it's like incredible because she's just so amazing of a teacher and she just gets them and she's got their attention, she's got her pointer stick and.
I didn't know Debbie was uh, doing that since she retired.
I think it's her second or third year, but she's just.
She's great.
She's amazing.
I thought it was getting.
It doesn't, the only reason I said those, I know they sold. They use a lot of goat cheese in those.
Oh, the chickpea things?
Yeah. Sweet.
Mm-hmm. Not what I expected, is it?
But it's, got the smell of goat.
Other?
I used to raise goats and milk them. And then Jeremy was allergic to uh, cow's mouth, so I made a lot of cheese.
Oh.
That's been a long time.
They have to delay our regular meetings.
Cheese, I'm always be mayor. I'm really sure I'm always.
Hi, Jody.
Hello, hello.
Hello, hi. You can judge me.
No, this isn't Judge Friesa.
Jody has beautiful hand dried.
Okay, we'll go with that.
Hey, I have some little kids here. If I can present you kind of a gift. Oh, that's very nice. You mustn't come.
That's totally fine.
What happened? Everyone else's came, and so I called and I said, um, it's not here, and you said it would be here, and she goes, oh, yeah, no, no, no.
Yeah.
I think you might be getting two. I don't know. I switched the color on one and they're like, no, it's this dusty blue, and I was like, no, it was backorder, so I did navy. Oh, we had dusty blue, and I'm like, I. Oh, but we have a navy ones. I don't know how many you're getting. I don't know when it's coming.
I'm excited. Well, that's very, thank you, but.
Between now and in the future.
You're gonna get celebrated a couple times. I love that.
Maybe once, maybe a couple more times?
I just want to let you know, so when you get your bag, there is one thing in it. Are you done with your?
That's, thank you, Jody, that is. I am. It was wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then we got a whole new, another crew coming.
Got two more.
It started like a three.
We have a new crew. Thank you.
No. Here's your appetizer.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
You have to moment. My name is Valentina.
Valentine?
Delacina or Angelina?
Oh, man.
Okay, my name is Peggy. Thank you very much. It's beautiful.
My name's Christopher.
Christopher, I'm Jason. Nice to meet you. Thank you.
Nice to meet you, Camilla.
Cool crew.
Yeah, you gotta use the right fork for your salad. Don't use the wrong fork.
Or they kick you out.
Yeah.
You're out of here. So years ago, we were at a really nice dinner for this, a train bin for. Entry cities and they like traveled all over the world, they're older, and they sit in their dining room and we're packed, like we're packed in there. And like, not even, they're here to their sideboard, you know, travel the world and have this little tour Madonna, and the wife is telling me how they got it with the package and all for the Madonna. It says, do y'all, Elisa, yeah, I had to gift him this the other night.
I bet you.
And we couldn't, like, we had need cards. I'm like, what? Every you do, don't be hard to not lean back. It's just, I don't, I can't like get that on, on, on Amazon, sir, and.
We just can't go to the store for that one. That's funny.
I, I think that's the most nervous I've ever been doing anything in my life, like.
Oh, oh. On the phone, Chris. Probably say, these are really. Grind it, I mean, and then.
I don't know, my son was probably.
Maybe my half.
Probably around one to two-ish.
The one time.
We went back to California Christmas and during. You know, the Christmas service, they give you the candle, right? And we're like, I don't think you should get one. And the, the church, ah, I don't, you know, just pay attention. And so, well, somebody, I don't even know who's holding it, but they lit his candle and he's just super like focused.
Yeah.
And all of a sudden, something caught his attention and he went like that, so all that wax went everywhere. And he almost cut a little flyer on pamphlet on fire. It was uh, oh, he did catch it on fire yesterday. It was highly entertaining.
Yeah, those candlelight services, you gotta, that's another thing. Yeah.
Wasn't coming, so I left it in there.
Now we're gonna see how the pros set the table. All the place fittings were so perfect.
You're not gonna do it nice. You might not do it right.
That's right.
Yeah.
Well, I guess we're eating during.
Hello.
I know. Hi, Zebby, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Kevin, who's your helper? Who's the adult helper in the room?
Oh, that's my wife.
I wonder if that was your wife or?
Yeah. Jenny.
Jenny or Jenny? And she's related to somebody here in the district, isn't she?
Helen.
Yes, but um, my sister is married to Benji Sonson.
Okay. Oh, that's the relation.
Okay. They're related, plus my mom lived here, so.
Is this your China then?
Yes.
Watch yourself.
Yes.
Be very careful, I promise.
And the only reason why I'm able to do this is because she's, she's a former chef and caterer, so.
Oh, that's.
Hmm.
Oh, wow.
Well, everything has been so nice and so, thank you.
Very nice.
Zebby, how is the new baby?
He is getting really big really fast.
Do that. It's terrible.
Five weeks old and we are literally putting him in three to six months out with already.
Wow.
So the zero to three month stuff that we had, we didn't even get through, so.
Usually what happens?
Healthy baby, that's wonderful.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Uh, that's a good thing, but it's um, he's not a really good sleeper, so we're trying to sleep despite and sort of working through that. All right.
How's work?
I have not been to work since December.
Oh, yeah.
I just, um, I'm taking advantage of the state leave that they give now.
Yeah.
Um, but I go back in February, so, um, yeah. I think. That's funny because I got an email today and I go back Thursday night um, for one night of patrol and then that point Monday, I have student officer tell like. I don't even have the opportunity to get back into the groove of things myself. I'm like, you're the student. So. You can be teaching me stuff after this off.
At least you're cute. I enjoy watching.
Thank you. Yeah, we get a kick out of like, he's got to that state, the baby bow, bowels stuff is like nonstop where he just look at her shell and try to talk. You know, makes sense to him, but not to us, but.
They grow up slow, but.
Yeah.
You know, a lot of people go into hot for baby clothes because they grow out of their clothes so quickly.
Yeah, and I can see what we were told. We haven't, we haven't bought any clothes ourselves yet.
You get brand new things in there for less than a dollar.
Yeah. Yeah, we were told, don't buy anything yourselves.
Right. I feel like Ms. Clayton's got that handled.
Well, she also has been doing a lot of the purchasing, so.
Yeah.
I'm sure she hates it. Not at all.
She was there when I left, actually, when I left the house, so. She went from school straight, straight over to our house, so.
Sure.
Um, Jenny's wondering if you want the main course served at six or you, would you like to make course before six to have some time to eat it before the meeting starts?
What would you guys like to do?
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
I think we have to go before the meeting.
I think we, I think we can keep eating into the next meeting.
Yeah.
No.
Yeah.
So we'll bring it up.
Sure. I did, I don't see it.
Cause I don't, I don't have, no.
Anybody guys, spot free, I don't.
Also, I figured that was my, oh, you know, so.
I know, horrible.
Well, that's, in this one at six, oh, five fifty-nine, hang on, five fifty-nine and then.
I'm gonna need one, one or two minutes to swap camp.
Okay.
If you wanna, if you wanna give us an extra, an extra minute or two.
No, I just talked to, I just let.
Okay, I'm saying a thing.
I, you go ahead.
Let's see if it was announced though.
No, but just, I just talked to Brenda, I mean.
No, not.
No, I just talked to her.
On Facebook or?
No, um, Tammy talked to me.
Okay, I, I don't wanna like say anything.
Like, he knows.
No, I don't, I know they know. I don't wanna say anything publicly. Family's not.
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, I haven't talked to John, so. Evening, guys.
Andy, how are you?
Good.
And Andy, just so you know, we are currently on, uh, the, we're currently broadcasting on.
Okay, well, that's probably a little late for me to have that discussion, huh? And you get to eat after.
Oh.
I didn't think that was gonna make. But you gotta, but you gotta eat it all at once.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Riley.
My name's Andy. It's nice to meet you. Nice to meet you. Oh, goodness. Now that we're all done, are we just gonna sit and watch you?
Yeah, fair enough.
And you're on TV.
And you're on TV.
Just turn the camera, it's just right on Andy.
No, I'm always so graceful. Put it in your pocket.
Please.
Put it in your pocket. Yes, you can come in.
The entertainment's here.
Oh, they are.
Look at that. There you go. I can find it. I'm feeling pretty special.
Oh, yeah.
Wow, that looks fancy.
I know.
Oh, very fancy.
Really fancy.
Super fancy.
And they've done such a nice job.
They did a beautiful job. You guys have your own song.
I know.
Guys, real fast, I've got some kids, before we start the meeting, I've got some kids for a little gift for you. So this is our, actually, our Heights and Leadership Team, some of our, some of our Heights Leadership Team, okay? So.
Thank you so much.
Oh.
You're not Patty. I'm sorry.
Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Spoil. Well, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Jody.
Pictures.
Bye, Adam.
That's true.
With the kids, do they wanna come get a picture?
Can we get a picture with the kids?
Yeah.
That would probably be.
That would come back.
That would be way cuter.
Yeah.
What are we gonna do then?
Over here, maybe?
Well, yeah, I think we'll bring on the kitchen. Um, they can all stand in front. We just stand here, they can stand in front of us.
Let's introduce your. Haley Polnitch, the third grade teacher of ours, and Kimberly Mandrbox.
Oh.
And actually, these guys started uh, our leadership and they are volunteering and they're our second year teachers, so I.
Great.
He's gonna get a great job with.
Thank you, good job.
So.
There were some parents taking pictures through the window there.
Yeah, they, they come on in.
It's gonna do, yeah.
Sixteen, sixteen ago.
All right, ready?
Yes.
One, two, three, smile.
Do you wanna adjourn the meeting? And our special meeting is adjourned. And Ms. Alina, Astrid, the astronaut.
No kidding. Alright, we're gonna call the meeting to order, six oh three. Please stand and say the pledge with us. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, start off by with entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agendas, pretend.
Again.
Horribly disorganized. I can barely function when they're spooking around. Alright, so Peggy, you were first.
I, yes, Jason.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Right. Well, luckily, we have information items right off the bat, Witstrand Archery.
I'm with the advocate, I'm just a little on it. Here are the coaches of Witstrand Elementary Archery, and we've been doing it since Chicago. And this year, we are going to.
Have you uh, you can hear you on Zoom.
And so we are going to host the state NASP archery tournament, NASP, which is National Archery School Program. Uh, this year, we were going to do it in two thousand eighteen and right up to the day that Friday, we had forbidden, so we were canceled, so we're trying it again. And so we're going to host it, the statewide uh, archery tournament, so we'll have schools from over and come over. And so we're letting you know about it, it will be Saturday, March eighteenth. And our fourth and fifth school will be participating in it. And we, I put at the top, and if you'd like to volunteer, we are in need of people to help out at it, and we'd love to see you there. If you have any questions.
Well, I assume this will not be in Witstrand at the moment, are we gonna do it at the old high school or?
High school, Witstrand, at our old, yeah, old high school, we will have a three D and then NPR and we'll have full site in the main gym.
Is there enough room there?
Yes.
Well, it's really exciting, I, this has been a program that um, I've had a lot of fun watching grow and, and between Wendy and Linda, they've just done an amazing job bringing this program along, and so I'm really proud of you ladies and what you've done.
We've taken students to nationals, uh, three years, three different years, I guess, two, but three different, with the kids, and so we're hoping to do that again this year.
Well, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Was there anybody signed up to speak? Up there, there was. Thank you, oh, this one. Zebby.
You wanna sit here or stand?
Please.
Okay.
If you could just say and spell your name real quick for the camera and the recording would be great.
Sebastian S E B A S T I A N, last of Castilla, C A S T I L L E J A. Uh, so I'm Sebastian Castilla, how most of you guys know me as Zebby. Uh, I'm a proud Prosser graduate, I graduated in twenty sixteen. Um, I no longer live in Prosser, but I'm still invested in this community, I love this community. Um, I'm involved with our Boys and Girls Clubs throughout, been in Franklin Counties, uh, the Boys and Girls Club played a significant role in my life, um, during my high school years, and my brothers attended the club um, during grade school and up until the point that they graduated high school as well. Um, so I sit on the Board of Directors for the Boys and Girls Clubs of been in Franklin Counties, and I'm also on the Cabinet for the Prosser Capital Campaign for a new Boys and Girls Club. Um, so that's what brings me here today. Um, I'm aware of the current negotiations with the school district in regard to the CTE building, um, with the hope that um, the Boys and Girls Club takes um, site control of that to uh, expand our programs and our reach for youth in our community. Um, I am confident that we will reach an agreement, but I'm just here to um, express my support for that and i- it's my hope that that happens in a timely fashion. Um, we've been very successful so far in obtaining uh, a significant amount of dollars to make this dream a reality, I think many of us in the Prosser community uh, see the need for this, uh, our current facility, it's the old school district administration building. Um, the school district moved out of it because it was becoming outdated and, and small. And for those reasons, the Boys and Girls Club uh, is wanting to move out of it as well, so um, I think most of us can agree that day one that the doors opened there, we outgrew it pretty quickly, um, there's a need in this community. Um, right now, it's serving about a hundred youths, give or take per day. Um, we foresee that that number doubling uh, with the building like the CTE building, um, it's the perfect location, um, you know, so uh, it's, the Boys and Girls Club would be investing a substantial amount of dollars uh, maybe a, a building that we can run programs out of. Um, I think that this partnership will really invest in the lives of our young people here in this community. Um, crime rates dropped here in Prosser when the Boys and Girls Club opened, so, um, and I don't know if you know this, but uh, crime rates for juveniles are up in Washington right now significantly, so uh, right now, more than ever, we need to have a place, a safe place for kids to go after school because at three o'clock, these doors close for many kids, and we need to make sure that we have a safe place for them to go. Um, and there's never been a, a time, in my opinion, um, like we're in right now, so we definitely need this. Um, so again, it's my goal that um, we reached an agreement in a timely fashion, um, we've had great momentum in raising these funds. Um, and, and I would hate to see some of that momentum lost because we get stuck in um, negotiations, things of that nature, um, and I realize it has to be beneficial for the school district and the Boys and Girls Club, but um, I know there's ongoing conversations and I'm confident we can get there, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, I'm sure we will get there.
Thank you, Andy.
Was there anybody signed up online, Blake?
Just one.
Alright, who we got?
Hello, this is Brian Eighth, I actually get to follow Zebby, which is kind of fun, uh, so just a couple comments from me, um, uh, following Zebby. So I, Zebby, great job, I appreciate what you shared, um, I wish I could join you guys in person tonight, but I'm up in Olympia right now, I did just wanna express thanks to the school board um, and thanks to administration, um, since we last met two weeks ago on this topic, it was great to hear the expressions and support from school board members and then it was great follow-up with a good meeting with Superintendent Ellis and Ms. Flores where we were able to talk through some timeline and process in order to get a lease in front of you, so I'm encouraged by progress over the last couple weeks and uh, like Zebby, I'm, I'm confident that we can get this done quickly and, and I appreciate this being a focus, not only of administration, but also the school board, so uh, with that, just wanted to express thanks, um, but following Zebby is always a hard assignment, so Zebby, thank you as well.
Yeah, he's very memorable here at our school, so, thank you. Alright, with no, whether, nobody else signed up, either on or offline, that takes us to consent, oh, no, it doesn't. Student rep reports. Ruby, you're up.
Oh, well, I didn't really have much to say or like update, but I just wanted to like appreciate Mr. Ellis for today at school, especially with what was going on and just wanted to appreciate like all like the secretaries, like Mr. Funk and Ms. Campos and Ms. Roder for like dealing with a lot of things at school, just wanted to show appreciation to the school.
It was a blast for me to.
I know it was.
It was so fun, but the situation itself wasn't fun.
Yeah, but you.
There's the energy in high schools that, um, I don't know, it's just unmistakable.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm gonna head out.
Alright, that takes us to consent items. Uh, do I have a motion for the consent items?
I'll make a motion, we approve the consent, now that we've had it presented.
Second.
Alright, we have our first, we have a second, any questions or concerns? Alright, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye. We do have one bir, uh, one discussion item on in between that it. Is it misplaced or? Okay, that's the Columbia Virtual Academy. I don't know who's talking about it.
It would be me, so we're required by the state, if we have a student that attends an online program but lives in our district, we're required to provide their state assessment for them if they choose to be assessed, if the parent chooses for them to participate, Columbia Virtual Academy is pretty consistent with having their students participate, we chart, we do charge them, they um, because there's, like, we have to, we have, there's processes we have to do, there's paperwork to do, we have to get access to their um, code codes to be able to access their assessment, so we just, we make arrangements um, with each of the buildings if they have a student and we schedule them and, and we test them. So, this is just an agreement that they, that they always send because we're gonna test some of their kids, so it's not really an option.
And then this will come back next meeting.
And the assessment is, we're not, won't be doing it till April to May, so we have.
Alright, well, anybody got any questions? Alright, we'll move on then, thank you. That brings us to action items, first up is vouchers. We have a motion to approve.
Some of.
I'll second it.
Okay, with a motion and a second, were there any questions or concerns?
Yes. And I'm sorry, I didn't email them to you ahead of time, we run a little late. So nine oh six, seven, two, three, and nine oh six, seven, eight, one are both alarm companies. Do we contract with two different alarm companies?
We contract with a lot of different companies. Um, let me look them up specifically so I can answer your question.
Okay.
So the first one was.
Uh, nine oh six, seven, two, three. It's ABS CO alarms.
I don't know if this plays into it, but we had the drama at Witstrand, remember they couldn't shut it off, made it face towards the end of the year, and we ended up calling. Somebody else and I don't.
Yeah, we also had all of our mandatory, all during Christmas break, they did all the mandatory testing and that's probably what.
So this was for service, um, for the elevator, that was PHS, the four hundred and thirty-five dollars.
Okay.
And then the second one.
Nine oh six, seven, eight, one, that's Mansfield, which I'm assuming is what you're referring to.
Same company, I get calls from the same people. When somebody has accidentally pushed a wrestling mat up against the alarm in the elevator or where some other forgot to turn it off when they came in, for whatever reason, at the middle.
Sorry to put you on the spot, but. Uh, nine oh six, seven, eight, two, I believe. So I guess my question is, it looks like this is a transportation to a sporting event? Yeah. So would that not fall under ASB or would it, would it fall under our general?
I don't know that it was actually for me.
It says Linden, so I'm assuming I think the basketball team went to Linden.
It was charged, um. The portion that was for the sporting event was charged to um, activity twenty-eight, which is extracurricular, so it was like, essentially like levy dollars.
Gotcha, okay.
For that portion, there was a portion that was charged to um, tr- transportation because it was a full tank of fuel.
Mm-hmm.
And so the portion of the miles was distributed.
Okay.
That way.
Fair enough.
But the gas car didn't work, so she had to.
These are, gotcha, no, that makes sense. And I think that's, that's all I have for right now.
I had a question on nine zero six, seven, seven, two, to the irrigation specialist. And do we know what school or building that was for?
Uh, this was ice melt, so it's you.
Oh, gotcha, okay, thank you.
Time to get that ice melt wherever we can find it.
Were there any other questions?
I'm thinking.
Be good. Alright, all in favor of approving the vouchers as presented, please say aye.
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 Alright, PHS Winter Ball Vendor Contract approvals.
Andy, can we take a quick picture?
Absolutely.
So they can, you know.
Yeah, no, absolutely. We got an order to beat tomorrow. We line them up, do what we did with the other ones. Cause there's gonna be a lot of.
I think we'll just have them do like the part like.
Okay.
In there? Yeah, you gotta get in there too. Absolutely. Thank you so much for the food.
Like a follow along?
Okay. Well, nobody's in a hurry tonight. Okay, so we left off at the PH Winter Ball Vendor Contract Approvals.
I'll move to approve the chess winter ball contract.
I'll second that. Is there anything the committee members Piper and Maggie would like to tell us about the event?
Come on, guys.
Which is next. Um, it's gonna be. It, it's gonna be out, um, on one country. On one country road, uh, on, on Walrus Road specifically, um, in a upcoming venue. Uh, we decided to use space just because she's wanting to advertise her space. So we thought it would be a great space. That's not the high school, which a lot of kids have told us that they would prefer it to be in another location. So we decided she's really no help without, so we decided to try to do it.
What's the theme?
It's a night in old Hollywood. Um, is there anything specific you guys would like to know about it?
You're gonna have fun?
Yeah.
That's all we need to know. No, it's the same venue, I'm thinking, uh. Her grandson played Grid Kids for me, so we used to have big spaghetti dinners there. Oh man, years and years and years ago.
Yeah.
It's really, really cool place.
I agree, I agree.
Any other questions? All right, guys, all in favor of approving the contracts, please say aye.
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 Aye. I know you guys have put a ton of time into the planning, so thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you guys.
All right, so now we're gonna do six twelve ELA instructional materials subcommittees. We looked at this a couple of weeks ago, three weeks ago, I don't remember, but recently, uh, Deanna?
Yeah, so this is our committee that will be reviewing, um, specifically secondary ELA material. These are. Primary mostly ELA teachers, administrators. Um, we have several parents, um. So that it's their job, they'll go through and do the review and do our due diligence and then they would make. This committee makes a recommendation to our district instructional materials committee. Then if, if their decision is approved by the committee, it comes to the board for final. They've, uh, they want to. Move forward and make a decision. They're really hopeful to find a good quality curriculum that we could get. That in their hands and get the training so they, they really wanna have it before they leave school. They've committed to me every, every other week. Yeah, they're very, they're, they're great.
Please thank them for me. Okay, do we have a motion to approve the subcommittee? Some.
Go ahead.
So moved.
Second.
Yeah, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you.
All right, last but not least, the vehicle surplus bids. Anything we wanna say?
It's pretty simple. We had one submitted by three of the, um. But on the three buses, we did not receive any further transportation van. And so that would be just supposed to be without any financial pain. I mean, we might be able to scrap it for a couple hundred dollars. Um, but we didn't receive any of it. So for this request, it's just appropriate, any free buses to be awarded to, um, Alberto.
It's a transportation van, the old, I say old, cause it was here when I was in high school, so it's super old. Um, that is kept at the high school for the transition, transitional students, or is that a different vehicle?
That's a different vehicle.
Okay, is that, is that on the list next to be replaced?
Um, if that doesn't come out of my funding, that comes out of the department. Transportation gifted that to them for their use.
Okay.
So that they wouldn't be taking the vehicles for administration or coaches.
Okay. Alright, that is good information. Thank you.
Well, we do have to plan to dress up.
I talked this back and they're willing to help us find one if they can wrap it and I've already checked with.
Oh, great.
So they'll help us find a discounted one and they'll put their little emblem on it so that when it drives around town. Help us find one in a good budget.
That is wonderful. It's good news. Thank you.
Um, a question. If things that don't get sold, can we send them to auction? Let's see what we can get at auction?
We can. So once the board approves for us to surplus them, we just have to follow the minimum posting guidelines.
Okay.
And then, you know, we can do whatever best practice we want us to do.
So this van auction, if the ECM is worth, uh, to replace it, it's about fifteen hundred dollars. This van blue books at like twenty dollars.
This, this van?
The one that did not get a bid.
The one sitting at maintenance in the corner.
Hmm, it's the old Chevy Venture. We took that thing back from Olympia with like twelve of a cent with, uh.
You could, you could buy it for tires.
Specific to this one, but if others don't get sold, we can send them to an auction. Okay.
And if they're in good quality, you know, I guess the thing is if they're in good quality, but new condition, we're gonna keep them and we're gonna use them until they aren't of any value left. And, and, and Omni's great at, at keeping our vehicles, you know, well maintained, so we do that. So once we get to the point where we determine them, that, that, you know, that they're surplus things, then you don't have much value left with, but absolutely whatever we can do financially to bring back anything we. We would be happy to that. We don't wanna spend too more money in administrative costs. Get money back, you know, that we're spending more to save money, but absolutely.
Spend a dollar to save a dime. All right, uh, entertain a motion to approve the, the bids. So move.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 All right, that takes us to reports. Amy, you're first on the list.
All right.
Talk slow.
Talk slow. Um, so there was the student enrollment, um, included in there. So if you have any questions, we can answer that. Our numbers tickle up a little bit, um, for January compared to, they have to drop in December and now they're up a little bit, so that's great. Um, Charlie Marrow with, um, Food Services, who just get awarded that a new grant, five thousand dollars. And for Waste Not Washington, so it's a, a grant to, um, enhance like our recyclable materials. And look for some efficiency at that place. So we'll be moving forward with that. Um, with it being five thousand dollars, is that an act, like does the board have to officially accept that grant? Do I need to bring that back for? An official acceptance or? I'm not sure how that process works for us.
I don't think we've done that before. It's good, I mean, well, uh, information normally, but whatever you guys wanna do.
I guess we should see through the policy. I feel like we had to approve one.
We do for donations.
Okay.
Some districts expand that to grants and donations because when you implement a grant, it can, um. You know, if you start doing a process, then that costs money, resources, and then when the grant is no longer funding that, you know. This one, we shouldn't have any, um, ongoing expenses. So we might replace some garbage cans or something. We'd have to do that anyway, you know, or add some recycled in. And but there won't be any long term. But I'd be happy to bring it back to official approval. We just, you know, we got the notice that we, um, can move forward with that. Would the board like to see it come back for official acceptance?
It could be an information item.
Yeah.
You know. I'll put that purpose, but what we put in there, um, the objective's in there, so. And.
Thank you.
For some reason, the board members are listed before. Superintendent. Anyway, next would be the Assistant Superintendent.
So, um, our social worker, uh, life sustentative, full social worker position closes tomorrow. So we'll do some screening over the next few days and, um, have a committee do interviews if we have qualified candidates. Um. Excited about that. Our carousel is that, that you previously approved is being used. I can see on the dashboard. Um, right now, so far, it's been anonymous, um, searches, families reaching out, but there's been fifty-seven communications so far. Or it was more this afternoon, this now than it was this morning when I looked at it. So it's being used. So that's really good. I'm excited about that. And then. What if Matt, I'm sure talking about strategic plan, but any time preparing the, the compression planning part for that is kind of my thing, so.
Alrighty. Well, just because it's on the list, the way it's on the list. Jeannie?
Oh, okay, um. Let me see, I've been busy going to plenty of sporting events, but we had a, um, tribe meeting. And I'll be traveling to Washington DC with Thrive on Sunday for a conference. I'm coming back Friday night. But we firmed up the dates on two events. Um, Making Good Choices, which is Free Family Enrichment sessions, and it's five nights. Uh, on Tuesday, starting February twenty-eighth. I haven't done it. I hope to attend someone, but I hear lots of good things about it. And then the program Hidden in Plain Sight here at the high school, March fifteenth, from five thirty to eight PM. So they, these are very valuable things for our community. Yeah.
That's it.
Peggy?
I'm too full. I can't think of anything.
Anything, Jason?
Yeah, um, well, I think first off, I'd like to thank the Witstrand leadership team and the Heights leadership team. They did a great job. Of introducing themselves and they were very personal. It was, it was good to see. So I appreciate both of that. Um. Wanted to give like a, a big congratulations. Um, I went to the wrestling tournament that was held here Friday and Saturday. That thing was huge. I mean, there was kids everywhere from, I don't know how many different schools.
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two schools. I mean, it just seemed like it, uh, from everywhere. Anyways, it looked like it was well ran. It, uh. I'm assuming it, it was finished well. Um, but anyways, I just thought it was a, it was, it was interesting to see put that many kids on the wrestling mat. In both gyms and, and be able to house comfortably that many students and parents and, and teachers and. Or, uh, coaches, et cetera. So whoever put that together, good job. Huh?
Can I add a side note to that?
Yes, you can.
So kudos to Casey Blair. I know I talked to her today and, and she, you know, there was a ton of people there. Um, so I know that there was a lot of people involved, but I know that. She helped, you know, she really ran the show. Uh, on that note, it was a really great financially benefit, beneficial, um, event. So if we could look into more opportunities like that, that would really help our community, like that, those are the things that will help fund ASB. And we, we do have those shortfalls because something like that, it is a lot of work. I mean, it, I mean, it, it takes some effort. But it is, there is a return on investment with that, so.
No.
Great example that we can enhance.
For sure, for sure. No, it was, it was good for everybody that was involved, so. Uh, lastly, I, I kinda wanted to address some rumors I've been hearing over the last couple of weeks. I wasn't. Here at the last meeting, but you know, a couple of weeks ago, I asked if we could look at different times that would better suit our broad. Community. And, you know, I, I give it to Matt and Selena, whoever was involved putting that survey together, it went up really fast and we were able to see it. But I heard more comments that we're trying to be shady and moving our meeting to two PM than I. Than I've ever have in my life. And so. Excuse me, so I guess that my, my, my frustration is, you know, a little bit of logic would have told you two PM would not work. For a board meeting. So not only would it be affect staff, but it would affect anybody with the job. So I, I just wanted to vent my frustration a little bit.
Duly noted.
Thank you.
Lisa?
And we, and we talked, I, we talked about that last week too, but thank you. Um, I was invited to attend, I was invited by Angel Stewarte, who I saw her, that she's attending tonight, and she's attended a few of our meetings in person. To attend the, and I may, I may say this completely wrong, the State Migrant, um, Student Advisory Committee Conference on Saturday. And it was by Zoom and it was fascinating on so many levels. It was the most. Efficient Zoom meeting I've attended since COVID started. They had breakout rooms in Zoom, which I've never seen anyone do efficiently. It was, they showed me how to use the translate feature of Zoom and closed captioning, because everything was in Spanish and I'm monolingual. And it was the best presentation on how, um, COVID attendance and lack of enrollment is affecting. School budgets statewide. It was really well presented. And then, um, something that re- I found. And kind of, it had not, something I hadn't ever registered before, a parent had said, that we are hoping that schools. And other families now understand what our migrant students have gone through through the years, when they're removed from school. And traveling with their families, that by not having school and the COVID shutdown, that those families now understand what the impact on our kids has been, as we can see how. The impact has been, has affected them. And it was, um, really touching that parents involved were. Had wonderful questions, were very organized, and it was just. It's, it was such a wonderful learning experience for me to learn from. It was wonderful. Um, I have had people reach out to me about when the strategic plan. Um, will start happening committee, community wise. Um, I'm hoping that's moving along. Um, and I. I'm gonna tie in with what you said about the wrestling tournament and the money, and I know, um, people in the community have been talking to the district about friendship games. And maybe that is something to tie in with that as well. That'd be wonderful.
Thank you. All right, so I don't have a whole bunch. Uh, number one, is I spent a couple of days at the wrestling tournament as well. It went incredibly smooth. It's, uh, what did we call it? Organized chaos. Uh, there were thirty-two teams, which was double, I think, any tournament we've hosted to date. Um, Juan did a ton of work, Casey did a ton of work, uh, Rick Follett came down Saturday, I think in the afternoon, so Casey could go. Watch a basketball game, coaches, uh, parents volunteered for the coaches room. They knocked it out of the park. Um, the other thing I wanted to speak on, and I meant to do it at the start and I just got busy and sidetracked. Is we had a letter that came in a couple, three weeks ago, an anonymous letter. Um, it was my decision to not read it. Any letter that comes in, in my opinion, that's anonymous, that's how it's gonna stay is unread. Uh, another letter came in asking why I hadn't read it and I'm not gonna. Um. Everybody and their brother has my phone number. Anybody approaches any of us, they can speak with us. Um, I just didn't want these letters to keep coming and people, somebody to get hosed out, cause I wasn't reading it. If it's. Um, whether I agree or disagree is irrelevant. If it's not signed, it's not a letter. So just wanted to get that out and say it. Um, and that's gonna be the last I've got to say on it. Mr. Ellis, your turn.
Okay, strategic planning. Um, I was compiling documents today about what will go into the folders when we start working with. Uh, groups of people. I've received lists, um, kind of some, some people, uh. That should be on the committee from almost each board member. So I still need to touch base, I think, with one or two of you. And, uh, get your input on that. But we pretty much have, uh, the collection of people firmed up and we have the documents and the data firmed up. And so now it'll be working with Deanna on, um, creating, setting some dates, sending out reminders of save the dates. And maybe even doing a couple lead up Zoom sessions, knowing that thinking takes time and, you know, the best decisions aren't made in haste. They're made over time. And so to start to engage people, um, and looking at the data, thinking about. What our schools could be and what we want for our students. So that, uh, the wrestling tournament, just a couple of quick comments on that. Um, we have strong support from our community and we had some, a lot of volunteerism go on there. And so I think that that is noteworthy and I just wanna praise and thank all. And so I think that is noteworthy, and I just wanna praise and thank all our community members. Um, I know that our athletic department works hard, I know that our coaches work hard. But um, not only was it a gift to the ASB, it was also a gift to the community. We had people stay here back. One of the comments from the coaches when I was there was, your restaurants are overrun, we can hardly even get a seat anywhere. And so um, that's big too, that not only does it create, you know, generate money for the. Um, school, it generates money for our hotels and our restaurants and everything else. Um, so. Uh, I had a chance, Deanna and I had a chance to meet with Brian Ace. Um, we are working on a contract. Uh, Foster Garvey had said that we should get one this week. And so um, after that, Brian and I had kinda talked about a timeline where we would sit down and. Really go through line by line and firm that up and then bring it back to the board. So I'm anticipating next meeting. Um, I'm hopeful that it'll be on the agenda next meeting for your approval. If you wanna waive, usually, you know, I try and do like a three-touch approach. With the board, if you wanna waive that, and I would just say, spend some time going through, um, thinking about it, reading it closely. And we can move forward and uh. It's not a policy, so it doesn't have to do a first and second reading. Um, Maintenance Director position. Um, I'm screening, currently screening applications for that. Um, I'm gonna involve some people within the department. Thinking about it too, probably a two-round process on that. Um, it has been an important role in the district. Um, there has been discussion in the past about. Uh, facilities, I know that you guys get calls in the summer about why is the lawn not mowed? Why is, you know, the grass burnt up? Uh, why is there ice on the ground, things like that? So I think it's an important decision. Um, for the directors to consider as well. Um, so we're gonna be moving forward with that and um, that will happen within the next month here. So those were the four items that I had. Um, strategic planning. Um, as we start to set dates for that, um, we will make another presentation to the board. Things that I was going through today that are in that packet. Deanna had put together a red sheet. Um, that she worked with when she was interim with the board, um, kind of a hot sheet of. The mission and vision and things like that. Uh, our past strategic plans are important, school improvement plans are important. The student, student data, both uh quantitative and qualitative that we've compiled, uh, because that has a story. And then the last piece will be input from all of our stakeholders in that conversation. About, um, you know, what are some places we wanna move strategically? So Amy's done a great job with the budget, and then as we start to get into that as well. That will foster the conversation about strategic plan will be, you know, make resource allocation. Moves with our, our budget with, so.
I'd just add that, so we, we were, we, we were working on trying to find a date or some dates. But um, and this facility really is set up the best because we're probably gonna have to feed people and, and. It's almost impossible to, to, because of that there's a play going on. And they have every night, and they have every Saturday until like March eighteen. So um, we had to make a decision, like, are we moving to a different place? I think this is the best place. I'm waiting a few weeks. Would be, it's, it's got, you know, we've got the technology, we also have the auditorium, we have good structures here. So that's kinda, Matt was gonna put some dates out, some choices, but um, it's probably. We have to just make a decision, are we gonna try to push and do it in February, but just find a different place? It is a relatively large group of people, so um.
Um, our internal conversations were that the lead time is gonna be crucial on this. Yeah, and so we put a date out, put a date out there and people can't make it. We missed the whole purpose of why, why we're meeting uh for, and so giving up lead time on that to say, hey, save the day, we want you there. Um, you know, here, and even maybe some Zoom meetings. About leading up to a, a number of them in succession or a town hall meeting to just start to generate conversations within the community.
Now, the last, like, the last two weeks of February, first week of March are like state wrestling, state basketball, like, so that would. If we just wait, let's just get through winners, the winter sports and go that week or two weeks after, or after the play. There won't be all the kid thing, events happening that would be complex, that would take people from being able to participate, so.
And that was my goal for the, the budget presentation for the community less than March. So it ha- it just so happens will lie, it was not intentional at all. Um, but I think that would be a great way to kick off strategic planning, is knowing where we were with it last year. And then also, there's the general conversation of what makes up the budget. How do we determine what our allocations are? So then the community can help us frame that as they go into the strategic planning. Knowing if, well, if you make these decisions and we have to pivot and go in a different direction, that we, we need more resources. Or, you know, where do we cut back and where the, you know, it's just, and again, strategic, strategic planning is to get ideas, you know, then we have to. And actually go forward with it, but it's just a really great timing that if we can kinda start that from a budget perspective. And then go into the decision-making, and then of course, look back around to the budget again.
Well, if it works out better to. To wait a couple of weeks to do it right. I mean, you could do it right the first time, or you could do it right the second time.
I like the idea of getting people, if we know now it's gonna be March, let's get those, save the dates out there and get the legwork done.
All right, anything else? All right, guys, that brings us to the end of our regular meeting. Our next regular meeting will be February eighth, six o'clock right here. We are gonna go into executive session uh to review the performance of a public employee RCW forty-two point three zero point one one. Uh, zero, one G, and there will be action to follow. Uh, to evaluate the qualifications of an applicant for public employment or to review the performance of a public employee, however, subject to. RCW forty-two point three zero point one four zero four. Discussion by a governing body of salaries, wages, or other conditions of employment. Be generally applied within the agency shall, shall occur in an open meeting to the public. And when the governing body elects to take final action on hiring. Setting the salary of an individual or employee or class of employees or discharging, disciplining an employee. The action shall be taken in an open meeting to the public as well. We will adjourn after we take, well, I guess we come back, take action, and then we will adjourn. And I think, what do you think, fifteen minutes will start up? All right, so at seven, we'll go into executive session. Until then. Well, I don't know about you guys, but I'm offended this. Thank you very much, guys. Okay, so we're just to. Going out of executive, correct? And then we'll do this on the eighth is the plan? Because it doesn't say on the.
Nope, we can say, coming out of executive session, no action was taken and. I don't think we have to say anything else. Because I think also.
Because it doesn't have anything listed, didn't have anything listed on there about taking. Action on the contract.
Correct, and we did not take it.
All right, we're out of executive session. Uh, team, no action is gonna be taken. We will take formal action on the contract on the eighth.